...the project, you know, we hope to bring.
Do you have any questions?
Jonathan's working on it.
He's giving the thumbs up.
Yeah, so there's a job, a job potential of 1,350, I think.
Yeah, that includes the SEAs investment as well and that, you know, that anticipates manufacturing facility that would bring a fair amount of jobs in as well.
So the SEA is working on that portion, I guess, to bring.
Yeah, yeah, this water line really sets up their site to be, you know, whenever folks are looking at relocating to a particular area with a large manufacturing project, obviously it's very competitive and this water line really kind of increases people's incentive to want to locate in Jasper County.
Okay, and then the, I mean, the dollars seem to be pretty exact, but if you get into, like any construction job seems to get into overruns and things, how do you prepare for that?
Yeah, we're actually kind of at the tail end of this project, we really hope to wrap it up in January, February of next year, so we're, we're right at the tail end of it and everything has, has been able to stay within the constraints of the contract so far. We're using the local contractor, J H Hires, they have great reputation, I know they do a lot of work in Jasper County.
And I did see, I think I saw it in North Point, up in Columbia area, is there one in that section?
It's a, it is a popular name, so we sometimes get confused with some other folks. We've got an office in Charleston and an office in Savannah and an office in Raleigh.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it looks like 1.7 million is what the total investment in this water line is?
That, no, that, actually, the, the water line itself is over a $10 million project. We ended up with a shortfall of 1.7 and that's when Department of Commerce stepped in to cover a portion of it. We had Senators Hutto and Davis went to Department of Commerce and supported the project and asked for the funding.
And how much has the developer paid towards this system at Pocky?
That is a good question, we had, so the total water line was 10 million, the grant was, I want to make sure I have my numbers right, the grant represents about 8.1, so that came from the South Carolina Infrastructure Authority and those were originally federal dollars that got allocated to each of the states. The Rural Infrastructure Authority were given the mandate by your state legislature to, to delegate the money and so we, through Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority, we put in a grant for the, application for the grant money and they supported the project and allocated 8.1 million. Our, the local match was a 25% match, so it was 2.7 million was the local match. SEA contributed 1.25 of that and then we as the developer contributed the other about 1.7 million. We also supported and did all of the engineering and design work, which was close to a million dollars when it was all said and done. We did all of the permitting, it was a large environmental permit that went along with this, we worked with the court engineers for almost two years to get that done and then we also purchased the wetland credits to develop the site, so that was 3 million. So, total 5.3?
Yeah, and I was just, I understand as other costs associated, I was asking on the line itself, and you have a shortfall, anyway, that's all I have.
Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I'm trying to do something here, bear with me.
Sure.
So it's about $125 a foot, it's 1,355,000 feet, it's got to be finished?
Uh, yes, yes, that is what it says.
So, for our part of the 180,961, I think it's a really good investment that we should do for what the payoff will be in the years to come, so I'm all for it, I think we'd be, I don't want to say we'd be stupid, but we'd be stupid not to do it, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
On this, finish it?
No.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
On this, when this oil pipeline comes in, or the water comes in, right?
Yes, sir.
Is this just going to be for North Point, nobody else?
No, the, the SEA site, the state site, the Palmetto site will have water distributed to it as well, which I know that over the years, there's been several different groups that have looked at it, one of them was a beverage facility that were going to use a fair amount of water, so they were, you know, those lines are sized specifically for manufacturing project on their side of the property and then the, the line runs across, kind of runs across country, feeding the 1,400 acre site, but it connects with the pre-existing line on 17 and creates redundancy and capacity for that area as well to continue growth and development along the Highway 17 corridor, so certainly not just our site and I think that's part of the reason that the Regional Infrastructure Authority were so supportive and were able to give us the grant money to begin with, because this, they saw this as an important project.
Will the companies that benefit by this, that haven't paid for it, will they be able to, will be able to recoup some of these costs?
They are going to be customers of Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority, so they, you know, Beaufort Jasper were definitely glad to see some increased customer base and those people will continue to pay into that system moving forward.
Yeah, but we're, we're spending our.
If we used the grant fund, then we wouldn't be spending any of taxpayer coffers, is that kind of what you were saying?
That's correct, and also.
And everybody's got to pay a tap fee.
Well, that's right, but to Mr. Kim's point, Beaufort Jasper benefits from that, I think you're asking, what does the county get out of it? County begets additional economic development, additional jobs, additional activity.
And the other thing is that when you loop that line back to 17, it gives additional capacity, additional flows for that whole 17 corridor that runs from Exit 5 back towards there where they're at a lower capacity, especially around that strain place area of 17.
It's just that in previous instructions or in previous meetings I've been at, is that when we put in a major infrastructure like this, it benefits a few that puts it in, but the other people that come in afterward have no, they just look into something that we've already paid for and that's all I was asking, if there's a way of recouping some of the cost, even though it's a grant, it's a grant that we're using for specific rather than we could use it for something else, so that's all I'm trying to say. I agree with it, it should be done, but I just want to open up that avenue.
Yes. Yeah.
I would say I agree wholeheartedly with what Chris said, I mean, that's a fact, on this particular project, I'll say that we, for me and I think everybody here, you know, we have some other issues going on, some things that we want to see done, simple things in our community, little projects in comparison, that we're having a hard time getting funding, so we're looking at it, but on this particular job, I would say absolutely what Chris said, that's all I have.
I didn't ask you, I didn't ask you, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, but what was the estimated number of jobs created by the park here, total?
The total number of jobs is 1,350.
So 1,350 potential jobs for $180,000 investment, that's, the return on that is exponential, so I'm all for it, I think this would be good to Beaufort Jasper, the region, as well as some of these major projects in that area that will bring higher wage, and we're talking higher wage jobs potentially in that area?
Yes, I believe so, particularly with the OEM.
Okay.
I just have a question about, is this all water from the Savannah River or is there any well water involved in this too?
I'm not sure where the water source is from Beaufort Jasper.
Savannah, Savannah River.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, okay.
It's, there's a, the main that goes down Currysburg is a 36 inch main, it's, it's got a huge capacity, so it's, it really kind of sets up the South Carolina Palmetto site very well for a development project.
Thanks. Thank you, let me know if there's any questions. What's our next?
Well, if there's general consensus to move forward, what we will do is I will figure out what the exact grant parameters are with Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority, we haven't gotten to that point yet, figure out how we need to finagle that and then I would bring this back to you in a resolution for your consideration, giving us the right approvals to make it happen.
Appropriations, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're going to talk a little bit about appropriations, we need your guidance a little bit on this. Appropriations, we refer to as all those bits of money that each year in the budget you have to look at to decide what you want to fund as far as requests coming from the Last year, I believe, the council said that they did not want to continue to go through all of the different individual requests and wanted some entity or some other group to sift through those for them, similar to how you sift through ATAX requests for funding, that kind of thing. So we reached out to the Community Foundation of the Low Country and Ms. Burgess and I have started working with them to see if they would be willing to administer a program for you and they've been great to work with and they said that they would, but they had some specific questions in response, they want to produce a proposal for you to consider, but we thought it'd be helpful if we walked through some of their questions with you first to get some direction so we could get that to them and get a better draft to you, then have them take a wild guess and then you have them to beat up the draft, so. With that said, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like Ms. Burgess to maybe walk through the decision slides with you and we got some direction from you, we can get this going, hopefully get this implemented in your, your budget that's going to be starting very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton, and Mr. Chairman and members of council, these are some of the questions that we received after our meeting with Mr. Wehrman on October 7th and so the CFL refers to the Community Foundation of the Low Country and they are considering establishing a Jasper County Grants Advisory Committee, which would be composed of Jasper County residents that could provide insight into the grant process. As a part of that, CFL would like to know, does the county council want to approve or review that committee's recommendations or turn the process completely over to the Community Foundation of the Low Country? So that would be the first question that they've asked us to provide some guidance on. The second one is, when would the agency budget appropriations for fiscal year '27 in total be approved by council and communicated to the Community Foundation of the Low Country? So they would have to know how much the council wanted to, in total, wanted to appropriate to the various agencies that, that make requests and so they'd need to know a timeline. Does the council have a deadline in mind for the receipt of the council's, of the community foundations' recommendations? In other words, would you want that to be sometime, obviously at one of the budget meetings in May or earlier than that or at what time would you like to see their recommendations? Because they need to align that with their work, with what they do. And then a fourth question is, would the council prefer a, an RFP, a by invitation RFP process or would you just prefer to open it up to all nonprofits that serve Jasper The other questions, they had about seven here, so when does the council expect that the funds would be transferred to the Community Foundation of the Low Country? And that's basically with the expectation that the Community Foundation would process all of the grants that they recommended or, and that were and/or approved by the council? So that question is, say it was $700,000 that was appropriated, the Community Foundation of the Low Country had determined what those, what entities or agencies would share in that $700,000 pot and when would the council expect the Community Foundation to receive that $700,000? Would it be as early as possible in July or somewhat later in the year? So that's part of the, what they need in order to make that proposal to you. Does the council have a deadline in mind for the receipt of the recommendations? Again, that's sort of back to that same question of when do you, at what meeting in the budget process would you like to see those recommendations? And then that's the same, same question again, I think I might have, oh, I know what I did, I copied the slides. And number five was the only one that was different, so there's not seven, there's only five questions, so you don't have to answer them all. And this, this is current and past appropriations, these, there are other appropriations that the council makes, but these are more or less the, the ones that are not required. So there are others that, like the MIAP, that we are required to fund, these are ones that the council funds throughout, and you have done this for several years, but these are sort of, can't think of the word, but you can, discretionary, thank you, so that these are discretionary and they're up to you as the council to determine. We put Keep Jasper Beautiful down there because we're not sure if that, that particular, if that particular appropriation is actually a discretionary one or not, but of the, of the discretionary, the total for this fiscal year is $710,100, so, and then the additional $55,000. I did, we did mention in the, that we thought that the, the Community Foundation of the Low Country could also serve as our committee, more or less, or to provide for the award of the local accommodations and hospitality taxes. We have a state committee that we're required to have for the state accommodations tax, but in the past, we have not had a particular committee that actually reviews the requests that we receive for the local accommodations and hospitality tax. We thought the agency appropriations and those local, local accommodations hospitality, they kind of go hand in hand, they're similar in that they're usually nonprofit, obviously accommodations and hospitality have to have a tourism-related function or, or purpose, but they were, the Community Foundation was willing to take a look at that for us if the, if the council wants them to do that on the county's behalf. So last year, the local accommodations and hospitality taxes that were awarded were $419,197. And again, the agency appropriations, including the Keep Jasper Beautiful, were $765,100. So, that's really, we're seeking your guidance and what you would like as far as responses so that the Community Foundation can provide a proposal to you.
I think that, let's ask the questions and then we'll go from there, I mean, this is a lot of, a lot of questions I think I have.
A lot of information you may want to digest it, come back at your next meeting and that's be fine, I, I would start at, at the end, I would start with the list of appropriations and I think you all have to agree on what you consider discretionary and what you don't, okay? You may have some disagreement there and once you do, that will define the dollar amount, so you're getting closer to answering one of your questions. One of the questions is, when would the Community Foundation receive the funds, once you establish what the funds are? That's sort of a staff thing, we could say July 1, but in practice, we have paid quarterly, all right? So we've been able to hold on to our money a little longer, so we'd have to come up with some sort of an agreement with them, I think that's more of a staff cash flow kind of question, so. That's where I would start, I would start with the list of them, make sure that if you believe the Board of Disabilities is discretionary or not discretionary, that kind of thing, and make sure we're all on the same page as to what you think is discretionary and what you, what you don't.
Can we limit funds somehow or do we have to just put it all in one basket?
You mean?
I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is, at least in my feeling, is the overage account, you have $300,000 into that, so if we take that and give it to them and say, okay, anybody that has, needs help with finding overages or maybe help out getting a will or something like that, can they go there and apply for it and just that $300,000 goes for that?
Um.
And we fund it through the overages, anytime we have an overage, we give it to them?
Right, you're, you're talking about potential organizations, not individuals, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Organizations or individuals? Well, organizations could be Low Country volunteers, Gulat, the Gulat.
I'm not sure if that would be lumped into this or whether you would want to do a separate program for that, just for accounting purposes, we'd have to talk amongst ourselves, but I understand where you're, where you're going, yes, sir.
I'm trying to take it out of our hands.
Right.
And put it to the right people.
Potentially talk with the community foundation, that's not.
And they'll be able to trace it better and handle the money better.
Yeah, perhaps we could do, perhaps we could do two, two amounts, one is discretionary appropriations and the other is restricted for certain uses, as you've defined.
Right.
Of the overages and they could essentially administer them the same, and that makes a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Chris, do you have any questions? I mean, I don't, I think we're going to have to sit down and talk about these in more detail, I mean, I've written some notes here that.
I mean, I've written some notes here that, you know, there's some of these I think we can probably answer, but when it gets to the, you know, all the other things, there's, it's pretty in-depth with the appropriations and, and whatnot. I do think the council needs oversight on it. We should be able to at least review. But yeah, I think we just need to set up a time where we can, whether it's another workshop or how we do that, but I agree with you on, you know...
Mr. Orzillo. So I saw the list of everybody that got some money last year. Were there any applicants that applied that weren't on that list? About how many people make application that aren't on the list? 20%? I'm not trying to get...
To be honest, I think there was only one. Most, most, if it's discretionary, I mean, if it's mandatory, they obviously get it.
Sure. It just seems like the process...
On this list, I believe there was only one. Now, not everyone got the amount they requested.
Sure.
So...
It just seems like the process from this year went fairly smoothly. I agree with Chris on having oversight over it, giving, I don't know who this group is. I just heard the name tonight. I want to make sure that the council has some sort of, if there's a disagreement on where it's going, like the $300,000. I know this is a separate issue, but if you just gave that to an organization to help somebody with a will or whatever, sometimes when the money's there, it gets spent. I don't know. I, I just, I just want to see plenty of oversight on this, on this whole process.
And we can certainly...
And that gets away from what John has said, which is give it to somebody else. My problem is the give part.
I would, we can reach back out to Community Foundation, but we can certainly request that they provide us with monthly, quarterly reports on how the money's being spent, particularly if it's that set aside overages amount. With this, with the discretionary appropriations, there was, they did have the question, did the council want to have oversight? And I think the answer is yes. You want to review what they have, what their recommendations are.
And what kind of costs are associated with this group? Is this, this isn't a voluntary group, assuming, or is it?
They're going to have an admin fee of some sort, yes, sir, to do this work for you.
Do we have any idea where we're going to be at that?
Not yet. I mean, we wanted to...
This is a proposal coming.
They have to have these before they...
Sure. And as far as the dates, I mean, we already somehow know the 700, and so that's easy. And I would say we would want to handle it, for me, when we do the budgeting, you know, make it part of that process, just like last time. But that's all I have.
Well, the first question, Mr. Orzillo, if I can, well, is it the first question? I don't know. About the committee, whether or not you want to have a committee to do this, and whether or not you want to be part of establishing that committee, or would you like the Community Foundation to establish a committee of Jasper residents? In any event, it would come back to you first, but you, that's another thing that you need to think about. Do you want a committee involved in this, or do you just want the staff to try to, at the, at the Community Foundation to take a look at that? You don't have to answer tonight, just something to think about. That's all I have, Jim.
Mr. Jean.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing about the committee, you know, who would the committee be, and how should that be? Residents, or, because I think every resident, because they just don't serve Beaufort, Jasper, I think they serve three other counties, if I'm not mistaken.
Any of the organizations do serve multiple counties, yes, sir?
Yeah, so I think that residents would have their own interest to kind of express. I would like to see, now, from what I see, it's a United Way, I just looked it up real quick, I think it has a United Way connection, and they've been around a long time, and they've donated a lot of money to different communities. Did you say it was 710,000 discretionary, I think, was the number?
Of our definition of discretionary, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, I'd just like to see the, I don't know, the pros and cons of each, you know, whether advisory from residents or, or non-advisory from this Low Country group itself, if staff can make a recommendation on that. I'd like, maybe if you can dig into it a little bit, and when you come back to us...
We're happy to do that. We're happy to invite the foundation staff over here, too, to workshop it with you. Mr. Kemp, if that's what you'd like us to do, come back with another attempt now that you have these general questions in front of you to think about. Or I think last year you appointed a committee of two, right, to do the appropriations?
Correct.
And that's another option, right? Those, a committee of two could get together and sort of knock some of these things out and give us some direction, whatever your preference is.
Understood.
Joey.
All right. So do have a couple of questions with that. I would like to find out exactly what the charge would be for them, obviously, in a package they would have on how they would administer it. As it pertains to them potentially with ATAX and with some of the discretionary funds, is there any way that we can implement some type of receipt system? If they ask for X amount of dollars, that we get receipts that shows it's allocated towards X amount of dollars? To where we know that the money, because at, at the end of the day, this is taxpayer money that is going towards this. We want to ensure that the return on investment of those dollars are there. So I don't know if there could be like a draw system that we do? I don't know if that's something that they could look at, but just to ensure that we're, the return on investment on our money is there. And then also, some of the groups that received money last year, there's a couple of them that were substantially larger than fiscal year '24, just rollover from '25. What are we getting for, for those dollars? So especially with some of the schools and other things there. So I think we really need to have some questions. I do think council oversight is a good thing, having these folks to kind of assist, but we, we need to know exactly what they're proposing, how much it is, before we agree to it, in my opinion.
Well, I guess I started this way back, and the reason I did is, the first four years here, we spent more time on these appropriations than we did on anything else.
Correct.
People would come in here an hour, a couple, you know, we, every time, the workshops and all that. Number two is, I, we give money out, but we don't get any, some of the stuff I got last year, we don't get anything back that, we don't get any proper documentation, right? It looks like it, but we just don't have it, and I don't think we have the time to, to work. We work more on $1.6 million, or whatever it is, the $700,000. We work more on that than anything else. And it's political, shouldn't be political, and it just got, it's getting bigger and bigger every day. And I'm just trying to make it to be non-political, and put it where it is, and make sure that we're getting the information back. That's it. And that's what it is. Oversight, I never, never envisioned them taking it over by themselves. It was just envisioned that they would do the paperwork and make sure it's going to the right place, make sure they're just spending it the right way, and bringing it back to us. If it costs us money, and I don't know how much it is, that's something that has to be determined, I think it's better than spending money and not knowing where it's going. That is the biggest part of the whole thing. Where is the money going? What are we doing? I mean, last year we had some of the things that were, they never applied before. They applied this year because all of a sudden they decided to come back up, and they started, a volunteer group started back up, you know? And that was, they're in competition with Parks and Rec, where if we could give it to Parks and Rec and let Park and Rec take care of it and be part of the deal. I mean, we're getting big enough now where we cannot do this small stuff and work on everything else. I mean, we're just getting too much, so we have to give it to somebody to do and give us the insight to what's going on. And that's all it is. I, I like the questions. I don't think we can just do it tonight. I think we, this is the first time we got it. If you would, send us that information, and we set up another workshop. And if it isn't going to be done this year, that's fine. Let's do it the right way. We'll just have another committee next year, and we'll just make sure it's done. And I tell you the truth, I would say that maybe we should postpone it until next January when we get the money in from the tax, so we're not really worried about taxes. I mean, we're, we're going into deficit, we're going to borrow money to give to these people. We shouldn't be doing that. That's, all these things have the questions that we have to answer, and I think this is just the start of it. And it's, I think it's a big change, to tell you the truth, in what we're looking at for growing up.
Well, your comments have been very helpful, helpful to me, sort of understand where you're coming from, and that's what a workshop's all about, so thank you. We will get back together with the Community Foundation, we will beat this up amongst the staffs, and then we'll come back to you for another workshop if you're willing, and we'll see if we can make some progress.
And just one other thing is, it does, it's not just, if we get something, one of us gets something and we think that it's worthwhile, we should have the right to go to the, the fund and say, this is what we, we prefer to do this. It's a symbiotic relationship. They got the money, we got the ideas, we're together. It's just nothing, it's not that we give them the money and that's it.
Right. That helps me understand the framework, so the framework is more of them doing the accounting, the vetting of the requesters, and the reporting of how the money's spent, and less on the discretionary decisions about what gets funded.
Right. And so we can spend money, more money on, or more time, not money, time, on doing the bigger things. Because I think if you, if you really look at it, the one point, the $1 million, let's say it's $1 million, we spend more money, more time on that, trying to keep that correct than a lot of other things.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Do have one, just a quick question. It's not related, but it is. With this being a reassessment year, when will we know rough figures that we're anticipating for FY '27, as far as amounts collected?
We probably won't know till mid-April.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, when you're talking about January, you're talking about January 26 or 27? For what? Well, you're talking about putting off, maybe. Oh, no, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that when, if we do this, we try to get it to the point where it's not, it's not in July. We don't have to give money in July, because we have, that's when we have the least amount of money. Okay, I got you. What I'm trying to say is, if we can postpone it and say it comes in January, or whatever, so when the tax dollar, the ad valorem comes in, we have money rather than have to bond it out. Right. I got you. You lost me there for a minute, but... Yeah, well, I usually do. Anyway, if that's all, is there anything else you would like to talk about?
No, sir, I don't, unless you, of course, you have any questions of us.
And Mr. Jean?
I'm good.
Joe? Mr. Chris? Joey?
Mm-hmm.
You got it?
I got it.
Okay. So I'm going to say that that's the end of the workshop. I thank you very much, and we have 15 minutes, so thank you very much, and I'd like to have a motion to come out of the workshop. I'll make a motion to come out of the workshop? Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none, the motion is passed.